Call to order, the Village of Hinsdale Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, May 17th, 2022. Please stand and say a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item up is approve the regular meeting minutes from May 3, 2022.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of May 3, 2022.
Have a second?
Second.
Any proposed changes? Nope. Roll call vote. Trustee Pastura?
Aye.
Trustee Harlow?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Stand.
Okay, here we have appointments to commissions. Is that right? No, no, no.
Want to do a village president's report?
Oh, right, right, right. Let me get this right. I got it. President's report first. So I'd like to thank the police and fire department for their assistance in responding to the Metro train incident at Clarendon Hills. I don't, I'm sure many of you read about it where a woman from, I think she was from Downers Grove, lost her life when the train, the Metro train hit a, hit a truck, but our, our police and fire departments were on the scene and gave assistance to the Clarendon Hill Police and Fire Departments. The village has budgeted over 1 million in capital funds to make needed improvements to the community pool. Those improvements were started last fall and are expected to be completed in time to open Memorial Day weekend, subject of course to weather. The improvements to the pool include a new pool deck, new filter system, and underground infrastructure improvements. Please go to the village's website for more information regarding the community pool. The Memorial Day procession on Monday, May 30th will step off at 10:00 a.m. at the intersection of Third and Washington. The route will be straight down Washington, over the tracks, and end in front of Memorial Hall on Chicago Avenue. A short presentation will occur following the procession on Chicago Avenue. I'm about to appoint some people to boards and commissions, but we are, we have one vacancy that we've been unable to fill, and that's for the police pension fund board. And the police pension fund board meets quarterly, so it's not a terrible time commitment. It deals in the investments of pension funds for the, for the police department, along with making determinations as to officers eligibility to qualify for the fund. A background in institutional investing would be beneficial. Interested parties should contact Chris Bruton at 630-789-7011. Okay, now that takes us to the appointments. I'd like to recommend to the trustees we appoint two people this evening. And then I'll, I'll circle back on the village treasurer thing. First would be Scott Moore to a, a one-year term through April 30th, 2023, to complete the unexpired term of Shelley Carter. Mr. Moore's well-known to myself and others in the, in the village and on the board. He also has a historic home, and he comes highly recommended by the chairman of the plan commission. So let's start with, with that. Or should I usually go through them all? I don't, can't remember what I, maybe, I'll go through them all, I'll do the second, there's only two. The second will be Gannon O'Brien, appointed to a four-year term through April 30th, 2026, to complete the unexpired term of Joseph Alicia. Can I have a, a motion with respect to those two appointees? Move to approve the appointments to village boards and commissions as recommended by the village president.
Second.
Roll call vote. Trustee Pastura?
Aye.
Trustee Harlow?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Aye.
Takes me to, to item five, which is the appointment of a village treasurer. The village code outlines the general powers and responsibilities of the village treasurer, which is an unpaid appointment. Last April, upon her hiring as finance director, Andrea Lambert was appointed village treasurer. Andrea has recently resigned her employment with the village, and a new village treasurer needs to be appointed. Daryl Langlois began employment as the finance director for the village in March of 2009. He retired in February 2021. Daryl served as a village treasurer during his employment as finance director. Daryl is well-suited to, to the appointment, bringing not only the technical skills required, but his valuable institutional knowledge of Hinsdale's finances. Daryl's agreed to serve as village treasurer until a new finance director is hired. Recruitment for the new finance director is underway. So I'd ask for a motion and a second to confirm the appointment of Daryl Langlois as the acting village treasurer.
I'll make a motion to approve Daryl Langlois as the active village treasurer.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you for Daryl.
Yeah, yeah, thanks much, Daryl. Roll call vote. Trustee Pastura?
Aye.
Trustee Harlow?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Aye.
Assistant's petition, anybody who wants to talk of anything that's on or off the agenda, if you've got something that's a specific item on the agenda, it may make sense to wait till we call that item. Any takers? Okay. That takes us to the first read. I think that's you?
Yep. Luke? Uh, this is for agenda item A8A, and it's an ordinance for the exterior appearance and site plan for changes to an existing one-story building at 222 East Ogden Avenue, which is located in the B3 general business district, and the applicant is Normandy Builders. I would note to the board that Normandy Builders is currently on the southwest corner of County Line Road and Ogden Avenue, and they will be exiting that property. This board may recall that Lakeside Bank had an application before us approximately 12 months ago for this very same property. At the time, this board sent the message that it was not likely to approve a special use permit for the bank, as it would not produce any sales tax revenue for the village, and we generally concluded that if we were going to take measures for a special use, we prefer it to be for a use that generated sales tax revenue. We do not have a special use application before us this evening. Rather, the use on that Normandy, the use that, by Normandy is a showroom and an office is a permitted use within this district and simply requires exterior appearance and site plan review. So I just want to make sure everybody's, you know, got that understanding of the difference between the permit, special use, which is a required vote by us, which is permitted use, which is a matter by right. The applicant is here this evening. I'm going to ask the applicant to run through the specifics of the alterations to the property, which include the construction of a rear building addition, just under 10% of the total property area, changes to the exterior facade, including the front staircase, a new loading area with screening, the addition of five new landscape islands in the parking lot, an increase in parking spaces from 65 to 70 spaces, which is accomplished primarily through restriping, removal of the existing non-conforming monument sign. There's no new sign in the packet before us this evening, but that will be approved separately directly by the plan commission, an improved landscaping plan, and then a new dumpster and, new dumpster area and screening. The site is 1.35 acres and is currently non-conforming with respect to certain bulk requirements, such as parking lot setbacks and park, and, and parking spaces. But as a non-conforming property, the, the bulk regs are within code. Also, I would note that the impervious surface will be increased slightly, but that is also within clothed. And when I say slightly, I think if I recall, it's 70-some square feet, so very small. Surrounding properties at this location include a multi-tenant office building and physical fitness facility to the east, this is where Shred is located, the Shell gas station to the west, the Gateway Shopping Center and a parking lot to the south, and across the street on Ogden Avenue to the north, multi-tenant office buildings. Residential properties, while not contiguous to the subject properties, are within 250 feet, and I would note that all the appropriate valings did go out to residents. On April 13th, the plan commission held a public meeting and reviewed the application, and it voted eight to zero to recommend approval by this board. Discussion points at the plan commission specifically focused on the number of employees in parking. Quick summary there, the currently, the Normandy expects that it may have up to as many as 90 employees, however, approximately 49 of those 90 employees would work off-site. It does not expect any parking issues, given the number, 70 numbers, 70 parking spaces that would be included in here. Also, it would be noted that the part, plan commission recommended resurface of the existing lot. I would note, I did not get the opportunity, I was out of town this weekend, to go and visit the property, but will do so before the, before the second read. Also, the plan commission did not review a final landscaping plan or lighting plan, so I would ask that the applicant run through that, generally a little bit more specifics this evening. And with that, I'd open it up to the applicant for comments, and then would it open up to input from residents and then comments and questions from trustees.
Thank you. Thank you for that introduction. Uh, my name's Dave Mitchell. I'm the director of architecture at Normandy. Um, I appreciate your time tonight, and, um, trustee Stifler did a great job introducing the project there. You hit all my bullet points. So real quick, just to walk through, um, the scope, as, as was mentioned, we're at the corner of, uh, this mouse is not working. Yep, this is Greek to me here. Oh, here we go. We are at the corner, uh, one, one property east of York and Ogden Avenue, as mentioned. It's 220 East Ogden Avenue. Just to give you guys a quick introduction, kind of overview of, I'm not having luck with this. Um, is that clear enough there? Why is this doing this?
Brad, maybe you could help out?
Yeah, I'm not, uh, this, this version of Adobe I'm not accustomed to, and this mouse is, oh, this mouse is a little funny.
Yeah, let me see.
There you go. Thank you very much. Yeah, that's what I was trying to do.
Or might be down.
There we go. Thank you, Bethany. So real quick, um, existing property, what we're proposing here is an addition off the south end, which is what's shown right here. The existing building is 12,600 square feet. The proposed addition is roughly 4,000 on the first floor, and the ground floor slash basement is slightly larger at 4,400 square feet. We are maintaining the existing curb cuts on Ogden, on Ogden Avenue. There is a counterclockwise traffic flow around the perimeter as such, with an eastbound in front of the building. Currently, there are a number of handicap spots out in front of the building, along with a handicap ramp. We are eliminating that ramp and actually providing handicap access at the rear of the building with an elevator, as is needed for the two-story building. Um, and we figured we'd just tie it in there and clean up the front facade in the process. So there are three handicap spots in the back. There's a loading space right here, adjacent to the rear entrance, which again is not a loading dock, but just a space per the zoning ordinance, and then the drive as it circles around there. So again, this is essentially the addition. We've got screens on the, proposed screens for the rooftop units there, and some screening on the west side of the building for some ground HVAC units. And again, maintaining essentially the center entry, getting rid of the colonial gable that we have on the front of the building, and kind of converting the front facade there.
Do you expect to put wayward traffic signs in as far as enter and exit?
Um, that hasn't been discussed. I think from a, from a general, from an employee standpoint, I think that's just going to be accepted, and I guess to enforce that, we're almost going to have to, because otherwise they're going to be going against the grain.
Yeah.
So I, I would anticipate that. We haven't gotten that far, but it's a logical step.
So what was the reason for the move down the street?
Well, it's space. Uh, we moved into that building in 2000 on the first floor, took over the second floor in 2010, and we're now kind of bursting at the seams again. Uh, we're looking for something permanent. We have a showroom, uh, that's upwards of 6,000 square feet, and that's an expensive item to construct and move, so we'd like, we wanted to find something we could purchase and build and have as our own.
Okay.
We wanted to stay in Hinsdale and just have a permanent home here. We have a, a showroom up in Evanston as well for our North Shore clients, because there's a lot of in-person meetings. Everyone knows there's no good way to get to Evanston, so we put a showroom up there. That's purely a design studio, so there's some hot desks there, but all employees essentially work out of our Hinsdale location, although with COVID, not everybody works out of the main office, you know, the way things have changed.
And the addition is to add more, yet more space? Is that the thought?
Correct.
And is it the same height as the, as the rest of the building?
Our addition?
Yes.
Uh, yes, it's slightly shorter only because of the mansored roof, but it's, it's not any larger.
Okay. And then if you're going to put in an elevator, do you have to have more height for the elevator than the existing?
Uh, slightly, yes. So that'll project up slightly higher, and we'll see that in the elevation.
Okay.
Um, so that's the existing building. You know, our Ogden Avenue colonial architecture that, that's up and down the street with the medical buildings. Our goal is to, as you'll see, is we basically, I call it the two bookends. We've got these two gables on either end. We want to open up the center of the building, um, which would be heavily glazed. That would essentially be our showroom. What we're trying to do with this building is utilize the perimeter for natural light for employees, and then take the core and place our showroom in there, maybe work with skylights and that to bring natural light in. But this is the existing building, as you guys have all seen. On the back, there was a playground area there, um, some grade change on the back as well, which allowed us to do a half-step in the back, which we'll get to. But, so our front elevation, again, between the two bookends is to open this up and glaze that where we would have kitchen displays essentially. Beyond that, we would have selections areas and, and other, um, design studio features. Getting rid of that gable, we wanted to, um, create a vertical element for signage with a canopy, you know, kind of take this from that colonial look to a transitional look without completely changing the architecture, but just modernizing it, for lack of a better term. So we'd have painted brick, um, black aluminum-clad windows, shiplap, center massing here with some punched openings in it, and again, a center entry stair with some landscaping, retaining walls. This is the west elevation where we would have some low screening for, um, for HVAC units on the ground. We've got screening up on the roof for items, rooftop units on the main existing building, and then here's your addition off the back. Um, you know, essentially, this building is, has volume in this mansored roof, and then a flat roof at this point. We're just going to go with the flat roof, pitch it, put a roof drain in there, so you can see that our, our HVAC or rooftop screen is essentially lower than the existing building. So you would not see that from the front elevation. Here, we just went simple. It's going to be a hardy siding, um, you know, cementitious siding, and we've got some sunscreens on there just because it's facing east, west, east, south, and west, and then ribbon windows, again, just to let in as much natural light so we can kind of have an open office environment. The back elevation here, um, again, the elevator, actually, I take that back, it isn't shown, but that elevator would project up back in this area, but it would still be below that mansored roof there, because you're only looking at an extra four feet in what you would need for that. So this would be our south elevation, which would essentially be parking across this whole front facade. Our secondary entrance, which is really our main employee entrance, there's really three entries on this building, and then this is our loading space. Again, right now, we're in the old bank, and everything comes in the side door, and most of what we get is, you know, hand-delivered boxes. We don't need a loading dock or anything of that nature. And we've actually, this, this loading space door actually leads right to our storage, which is the whole back half of the basement. And then again, this would be the east elevation, and painted brick. Here's the front element, and again, just the addition off the back there. These are just some of the features we're looking at, or, or some of the items we're looking at, you know, just from painted brick, hardy siding, shiplap siding, aluminum storefront systems, aluminum-clad windows, metal canopies, roof screens, dumpster enclosures and HVAC screens, the sunshades, and some various, um, lighting there. So here's our photometric for site lighting. What we're trying to do, um, we're not interested in adding, adding any parking lot fixtures. That does kind of minimize lighting on the, um, on the west and the south property lines. So we're, I mean, we start to lose one foot candle within 30 feet of, of the building, so there are no issues, you know, that the village would be concerned with. There is very little, I mean, as, as with Shell here and the office building here, there is some overcast of their light, very minimal, um, and likewise with Ogden Avenue, but at this point, we're essentially lighting the building with surface-mounted fixtures, which would be at these locations and along the sides at these locations here. And, and those fixtures are just this element here. I mean, it's literally a, you know, 18 by six by six, and it's just a directional, down directional light, you know, down and out.
What are the foot candles at the southwest corner?
The southwest corner of the-
I'm sorry, southeast corner.
Zero.
Yep. Um, at that, over here?
Yep.
This is all zero in this area.
Okay, good.
Yeah. And that is a, because there is a light fixture right here of the building next door to us, and then there's another one that's right here as well, which is the parking lot for that building next to us.
Okay. And if I'm thinking about it correctly, that southeast corner is the closest to the residential areas?
Correct, but there's another, there's a B1 south of that parking lot, and then, yeah, exactly. Um, I did have a landscape plan in here.
And what was the thought process with including the five new parking lot islands? Which, which is good.
Um, we were trying to, you know, for some reason, the landscape plan isn't on there, but that was submitted, Bethany.
And we have that in our packet.
Okay. Oh, there it is. So the, the islands that we added, some of it was just to bring some greenery. For example, this whole front here is currently, uh, these two peninsulas here, this area here, and this area here are all just paved and striped, so we're adding those for some greenery, especially along Ogden Avenue, because we did want to add landscaping, um, in this area right here, as well as some landscaping here, and again, some grass in that area. This will just be turf as well. There's, there's a power pole in this location, so that was kind of a, we lost two parking spots there, so we just wanted to soften that and put some grass there.
Yeah.
So really, that was the, the gist of it. And then additionally, with this grade change here that we have in our loading docks, there's going to be a retaining wall, and then we wanted to landscape slash turf this just to soften that and, and get rid of some pavement.
So why wasn't the landscaping plan something that the plan commission reviewed?
We, we had this, and they had options on the type of species, so this just defines the species.
Okay.
It's specific.
So they looked at a plan, but they just didn't work at specific species?
Correct. And essentially, again, we're lands, this is where the current sign is that's going to be removed. We're landscaping this. This is our proposed sign location, which is another approval. Landscaping the whole sidewalk at Ogden, completely redoing the front facade from east to west, and then there's some miscellaneous on this side, and then again, back in this corner and along the, the face here adjacent to our parking, so.
In, in my opinion, if you go around that property right now, it's, there's almost no landscaping.
No, there's no landscaping.
Yeah, I mean, you can look at it.
Anything you put there will be an addition.
Yeah.
So then the conditions that the plan commission recommended, the, what, redoing the parking lot, is that something you're agreeable to do?
Um, I'm sure it's something we'd like to do. It's just a budgetary issue, and I guess we need to see where we're at. I mean, this is, we're, we're, our goal is to be in at the end of next year, um, so we've got a lot of work to do between now and then, and we're trying to get this jump-started, and we'll know more forward with budgeting. I mean, eventually, it's going to happen, because it's only going to get worse, right? And that's not something we want with our image.
Is it concrete or blacktop?
It's, it's asphalt, uh, blacktop.
So Luke, were there any other conditions?
No. I mean, the, the plan commission, they were actually very enthusiastic about the project.
Okay. Yeah, I, it's an improvement.
Yeah.
And, and to some extent, I think that if, if, you know, you've got a business you're proud of, and you'll try to maintain it, and if the parking lot needs to be redone, you'll do it.
Right.
So I hate to put a condition like that on, but we, I guess we'd like to see it redone. But I mean, I, in situations like this, I always think that, you know, this is your business, you want customers to come here, and you want them to be attracted to the location, so you're the ones that are going, you know, it's in your best interest to have the site look nice.
Exactly.
But I do think the landscaping is much needed.
Uh, I would agree, yeah. It's, it's in bad shape out there. It hasn't been maintained in, in any fashion.
Will there be any commercial vehicles stored on the property?
No, no. I mean, our superintendents have work trucks, but they're pickup trucks or, or, you know, sedans or just general-sized automobiles, um, so there might be something there overnight, but for the most part, there's, that'd be rare. I mean, there's no-
So there's no permanent, it's just, I, I noticed that you guys, you have trucks with your logos on the side of it.
Correct.
You don't have a fleet of those trucks, which are going to be-
No, no. Everybody drives, yeah, all the superintendents, the superintendents and the salespeople all have Normandy cars, for lack of a better term, the white with the yellow, yellow logo, um, and they drive those to and from work. I mean, there's, on occasion, they might be left there for some reason, but-
Which is, I mean, that's just, that's no issue.
Yeah.
Thank you. Seems like a really nice project.
Thank you. Yeah, we're, we're excited and looking forward to it. Now, if the construction prices could go down.
Any residents here on this? Anybody else here on this issue?
I mean, there were no residents at the plan commission meeting.
Okay, okay.
Other trustees?
I just think this is a really great project, and it's going to be a really big improvement.
Yeah. Yeah, I wish you'd get something where they sold something we'd get sales tax revenue out of.
Yeah.
You know, this is a permitted use, and you are vacating a property that's closer to Ogden Avenue, that maybe we'll get something there.
Right.
As sales tax revenue.
Right.
So that's, we hold out our hope for that.
So I would say, you know, given the comments here, um, I haven't looked at the parking lot yet, so I can't opine on that or see where that is. I'll look at that within the next two weeks, um, and then communicate with Rob as far as whether you should come back at our next meeting, which I think is scheduled for the middle of June.
Right.
Fourteenth.
And whatever direction he gives you.
Okay. Okay, excellent.
Great.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks much.
Thank you.
And just as, if you guys can hold on to the big drawings, just set them here and-
Yep, we'll get these.
Can we leave these, the, the big drawings?
Yeah, keep them. Or, or if you leave them here, they'll put them in your packet next time.
Okay.
Okay, Matt? Oh, no, I guess it's the-
Michelle had the bag.
I had the bag, yep.
Everything is in order. I move to approve the payment of the accounts payable for the period of April 21st, 2022, through May 11th, 2022, in the aggregate amount of $1,746,158.53, as set forth on the list provided by the village treasurer, of which a permanent copy, copy is on file with the village clerk.
Second.
Roll call vote? Trustee Pastura?
Aye.
Trustee Harlow?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky? So we have, um, two consent agenda items. I just have one question about, um, what is it, 9B? I couldn't figure out, George, what, what the budget amount is. Is 53,116, is that the budgeted amount for salt?
That will be the appropriation for next year, because we, essentially, we're buying the salt in advance, we're in a calendar year budget.
Oh, I see. So this is to be budgeted?
Correct.
Okay, okay, got it.
We also have some savings in this year's budget due to some lack of use, so we didn't go over our budgeted amount, but that, that amount will be earmarked for next year.
Got it, okay. Can I have a motion with respect to the two consent agenda items, 9B and- Can I have a motion with respect to the two consent agenda items, 9B and 9C?
A motion to approve consent agendas 9B and 9C.
Second.
We'll call vote.
Trustee Postuma?
Aye.
Trustee Harlow?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Aye.
Neil?
Okay. Very excited about item 10, which is to approve outdoor dining permits for eight of our village restaurants as part of our quest to have an outstanding outdoor dining program that our restaurant owners, residents, and visitors to our village will enjoy. Our outdoor dining program began during COVID as a means of getting people to eat and drink out in the open. We had the infamous Jersey barriers, and cobbled together various table and chair combinations, and put up tents, and all that worked out pretty well, given the circumstances, and was widely popular. We found out the customers really like outdoor dining. Since then, we've developed more appropriate standards for how we would like our outdoor dining to look, a little more organized, a little more reflective of our village. This is still a work in progress. It's not, probably not going to be perfect this year, and there'll surely be some additional lessons learned. So I'm going to briefly describe what each restaurant proposes to do. There are some departures from our newly developed standards, and I will mention those, and we, trustees can discuss how we want to proceed with those. There are site plans in their package, which show each restaurant's proposed layout for tables and chairs. Of course, all of these will be surrounded by village-provided circular and rectangular planters. One last thing before we get into the individual restaurants. We have developed standards because you need some rules to live by, but the village staff and the village board want you, the restaurant owners, to be successful. We want the general dining public to enjoy outdoor dining as much as possible. So whatever the village can do to make this happen, we're ready to do so. Okay, so with that, I'm going to go to individual restaurants. First one up is Cafe La Fortuna at 46 Village Place. I won't go into all the details of this, but basically, they're going to providing six tables with different granite top designs and black bases, as well as two benches and black burgundy chairs. They'll have free standing beige umbrellas, and they will have four of the rectangular planters and six circular planters around the perimeter in front of the area. As far as I know, Bethany, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think everything is in agreement with the design standards there.
That's correct.
You okay?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Next, Altamura Pizza at 9 West First. They're requesting approval to set up four tables on the sidewalk in the village right of way along First Street, adjacent to their building facade. They've been proposing, they've had this outdoor dining area since 2018, and the outdoor dining area, which they've been using, includes blue metal tables and yellow metal tables, which they've been set up for the past several years. Now, the proposed tables and chairs use bright colors, which require approval of an exception, they're an exception to the outdoor design standards by the Board of Trustees. I don't know how everybody feels about that, but I think in this situation, and first of all, the owner, I'm told, has offered to paint her chairs for this year and/or order new tables and chairs for next year. I'm thinking, just leave everything the way it is.
Kind of my view on this, and it's, we'll go through each restaurant, it's general, if they've got existing equipment or tables and chairs, I think the restaurants should be permitted to continue to use those, but when they come for replacement, then they should follow what we have and put the rules and-
Yeah.
Standards we've put in place.
But I think we've got better things to do this year than, we're, paint your, paint the chairs and tables.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so that takes us to Il Pajolo, 80 First Street. There, we have two, they've proposed two options. One, which they would operate within a 560 square foot outdoor dining area that measures 40 feet long, which is the amount of the frontage they have on First Street in front of their, in front of their restaurant. There, they'd be located, the area would include eight tables with red metal chairs, they have outdoor heaters, and then they would have five tables would be installed along the sidewalk, adjacent to the building side, for a total of 13 tables. They've been using the same tables and chairs they have on the sidewalk for the past several years, which includes red metal chairs, and this matches their outdoor dining area and kind of their general color of the restaurants. Now, and the second option would be 60 feet long rather than 40 feet long, and would extend an additional 20 feet to the west in front of the Marcus Building at 101 South Washington. In order to do this, they would, well, this, of course, would provide them with more tables. The village would have to order additional planter boxes to accommodate this. But one thing, and then there's some issue whether, as to whether, right now, the regulations state that you have your outdoor dining in front of your restaurant. Now, in the case of Marcus, they have gotten an agreement from, I'm sorry, in the case of Il Pajolo, they've got an agreement for Marcus next to have their tables extend in front of that building there, and I'm told that the owner has talked to several other businesses in the area, and they're okay with it too. So that's another thing for us to think about here.
So you want to take these, as they come up?
Yeah, that's, is that good?
Is there any reason not to allow it to extend to the one parking space in front of Marcus?
I don't think so. I mean, I think we're, I mean, unless people have big problems with that.
Is that permission going to, in writing from Marcus? I mean, I don't want to get in front of-
I believe there was an email from them.
Okay.
Is there a representative from Il Pajolo here?
You have it? Do you have the email?
We do.
Okay, well, that's, okay.
Yeah, in situations like that, I just think, you know, something in writing or whatever the terms of condition, because I don't want the village to get in the middle of a he said, she said.
I think they were being good neighbors and asked.
Yep.
Well, how many extra planters would need to be ordered?
We have not determined that amount yet, given we wanted to see them ordered.
But I will say that planters have been ordered for all of the restaurants who had kind of shown initial interest in the program. Two restaurants have not applied anything yet, so we, I think we would have standard, I mean, containers probably to take care of that for right now, and then we could just order more if those other two restaurants came on board.
I see, okay.
And just to be clear, the, all the, every existing table or chair would be protected from vehicles via a planter?
Yes.
Yeah, I was going to ask, if we didn't have enough, like, what would we do until the new planters showed up?
Yeah.
I think that needs to be a condition.
Just put up some pylons? No, no, we're not going to do that.
It sounds like we're going to have enough, though, right? It sounds like-
It sounds like we're going to have enough. So, I mean, I think this is subject to, I mean, one of the things, I think the community development department is going to be approving all the installations once they're in place, and at that time, you could say, wait a minute, we have to back off the width of that, or, you know, whatever we have to do.
Yep.
And the heaters here, they're, the proposed heaters are within the ordinance that we passed, no exterior tanks, okay?
They submitted pictures.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so are we good with that?
Yep.
Okay. All right, that moves us to Nabuki, and they're going to be requesting an 812 square foot dining area, located in the right of way along First Street. The area will include 12 tables with gray laminate tabletops and black aluminum bases. Now, a couple of things there, a little out of the ordinary, that they're requesting there is, they would like to have a black aluminum host station to be located at the east end of the outdoor dining area, which is basically what they were, what they had in place last year. Now, our design standards specifically say do not have a hostess area, or host hostess area outside. In the case of Nabuki, if you're familiar with that, if they didn't have that, you have to go up the ramp into the double doors there, go to the hostess station there, come back down. It's, having the outdoor one seems to be a good idea, doesn't it?
Well, it's certainly executional, I do it in the business.
Yeah.
I don't think two streets up to the street is that.
And would that be within the planter boxes?
Yeah, it's at the east end of their, it's just what they've been using really the last couple of years, it's been there.
Okay. The only thing I would say on that is, let's document that somewhere, that, you know, it's because of the long trail to get up into the restaurant and come back, because I just want to see, we, as a board, typically don't like to give preference of one business over another, we want to make sure that everybody's on a level playing field. I think that this is an exception here, though, and just want to make sure that it's noted, so the next time it comes around, we've got a measurement or a benchmark.
Yep, I agree.
Okay.
All right, now, the other thing they're requesting is requesting an exception to the outdoor dining design standard to allow live music. Now, the design standard does not allow music speaker televisions or projectors in the outdoor dining areas unless approved by the Board of Trustees on a case-by-case basis. For the last two years, the area, there's an area at the west end of the outdoor dining space that was used for entertainment. Now, I'm told it was used Tuesdays and Thursdays from 6:00 to 9:00, weather permitting. Is that what the suggested program?
Can you stand up at the microphone, please?
Hey, I'm a rookie at this. Is this right, Tom?
You're going to try by fire her.
Yeah, you know, we did entertainment in the street to, I guess, just have a, create some atmosphere there, and it was part of the, you know, I guess, attraction that made a destination place for people to go out over the last couple of years. It proved popular, and, you know, we had several people requesting whatever performers we had, they'd actually gotten booked for private parties in areas here. It was amplified, basically acoustic music, but it was amplified, and we tried to keep it, like I said, from 6:00 to 9:00, and-
Is that Tuesdays and Thursdays?
Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Is that the plan for this summer?
Is what we did. And I know-
So it's the same thing you did last year, you're asking to do this year?
We have done it the last two years, yeah.
Right, but that's, you're doing the same times and the same days?
Absolutely.
Has anybody complained?
We-
Yeah, from what I recall, we had, I think, just two complaints, but the, an officer went out there and determined that it was not, it was reasonable. I think the officer sat on the other side of the street.
Okay.
Was the complaint about the loud noise?
I think the complaint was the fact that there was music, not the-
Okay.
The volume, but we, this is why, this is a great issue to come to the board, because from the officer's perspective, it was completely reasonable and consistent with what should happen in a village center.
So the complaint was the fact of music, not that it's too loud?
Correct. And that's just from memory, I think there was only two.
Okay.
I mean, any issues with some of the other owners here? Okay.
No one's asking to turn it off or turn it down? Nope.
Okay.
I don't have a, I don't have a problem with it, you know, Tuesdays, Thursdays, 6:00 to 9:00.
Yeah.
I think it allows the owner, given what he's hearing tonight, you know, he knows if we get a ton of complaints, we're probably going to cut it, so he's going to keep it within-
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, I think in a case like this, if there is, something comes up, then we have to kind of revisit the-
Has there been any kind of a noise conflict with Uniquely Thursdays?
You know, not that I was aware of, Uniquely Thursdays, we could actually hear some of that when they're performing here on First Street. I can't remember how many nights they did it, was it four or six last year? It wasn't as frequent as we were doing it.
Right.
It was, I think more, once or twice a month they do that now? I forget when Uniquely Thursdays was, but-
It's usually every Thursday.
Oh, was it every Thursday?
We passed the name.
I'll be schooled on that, thank you. Better taken out, but.
And are, so there are speakers? You say it's amplified?
It was amplified with basically speakers that we had pointed, when we set them up, it would have one going east and one facing west. We pretty much shared the expense with Pajolo, obviously sharing an owner in the building and business as well.
But I mean, you don't have speakers, let's say, at the east end of your restaurant?
No.
So it's just-
The spaces in the middle between us and Pajolo, and we had, you know, had a speaker facing each way. You know, the Glimpse people loved it.
Yeah.
They felt that it was actually a draw, and I don't think you saw more people on First Street over the last two years of, you know, the COVID situation, even through the entertainment that, you know, hopefully people were able to showcase or have in front of their business.
All right, I think we're good?
Yeah. So you're going to keep it Tuesday and Thursday, 6:00 to 9:00, and if you want to add more days or times, come and talk to us, okay? So we'll keep it to that.
Yeah, no, that's, that's the plan.
Okay.
That was what was budgeted, and, you know, what we had, like I said, done the last couple of years, so if it can continue, great.
Great, thank you.
And one other comment, I think for next year, if you're consideration for any changes, I've worked a lot of restaurants, and patio season almost starts by May 1st. If there's a way to perhaps, in the future, revisit when it would be allowed to get set up?
Yeah.
I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, we're playing with, well, I think we, next year, we do start at May 1st, but just this year, we weren't ready to do it.
Our code was actually set up to start at patio first, but we didn't have a planter box.
Right.
Okay. Oh, terrific. Well, great, you're already on it.
We're on it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. All right, that moves us to Fuller House. Fuller House is requesting approval to operate a 456 square foot outdoor dining area located in the right of way along First Street, right in front of their restaurant. This would, this measures 38 feet long, and the area will include 10 tables with wood tabletops and black metal bases. Black metal chairs and umbrellas with black fabric are used. And five heaters are proposed, with the final number and location will depend on spacing from the tables and umbrellas. Everything else is in compliance with Fuller House.
Great.
That moves us to Vistro Prime, and they're requesting approval for a 364 square foot dining, outdoor dining area along the right of way in front of their restaurant on Washington Street. The area would include about nine tables with wood tabletops, black metal bases, and white metal chairs. No umbrellas are proposed at this time. Now, one thing I should mention, and this, when I get into the next, next item on the agenda after this, the staff is still developing the appropriate footing for the area that's going to be in front of the restaurant, since Washington Street is angled, but I think they're close to making, coming up with something that's going to work, work out for them. And then also looking at a separation between Fuller, between Vistro and Sauce next door. But other than that, I believe everything is in compliance with Vistro Prime. And then next, next door to them at 114 South Washington, Sauce Pizzeria, they're looking for a measure, or an area 26 feet long, will include three brown picnic tables with three red fabric umbrellas. Here again, with the grade changes, we're looking for the appropriate flooring and separation from the restaurant next door. And that takes us, I think the last one is Paige's Restaurant, is looking to operate an out-
Neil, are the, I know, I realize they have the picnic tables now, but is that, is that consistent with code, the picnic tables?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
When we had some of the meetings with some of the restaurants before all this came before, we got feedback that they wanted picnic tables.
Okay.
So we amended the design standards to allow that.
Okay, so moving along to Paige's. They are requesting an exception to the outdoor dining standards to allow for the area to be located about 70 feet west of their business, because their business is a little different configuration there. They're going to be in the brick paved sidewalk area to the east of Hinsdale Avenue, which, and the restaurants used this location in previous years. The site plan is still pending, because they have not submitted it yet. But they would have five plastic picnic tables, as well as six wood tables with metal bases and black metal chairs. And then the, they would have 17 circular planters would be located along Village Place. And five umbrellas, five umbrellas are in a bright green fabric, which theoretically does not go with the design standards, although that's something they've been using the last few years. Now, there's one situation I'd heard with the, with the salon right next door about the windows. Could you address that, Bethany?
In prior years, they set up, they just set up tables directly adjacent to the building. So a lot of the clients inside the building could basically see people eating. And one of the things that the hair salons, Zazu, requested is that there be no tables set up directly next to their windows, which would be different than last year. And that maybe we stagger some of those, how we set up the tables, so that there isn't direct visibility into those tables from their clients getting their.
So can you get the same number of tables that they're requesting, doing it that way?
We're hoping so. We spoke with Zazu today, and we're hoping to meet on-site on Thursday and see what we can do to tweak the site plan.
Okay, we have a proposed site plan here, which has not been finalized. And, but I think, I'm, I'm confident, then it shows all where the circular planters are in so far.
Yeah.
I'm confident, though, we can work, this can be worked out.
Okay.
And in that site plan, which is still pending, we got pretty close to the number of tables and chairs they had in previous years.
Okay.
So we're hoping we can find a solution.
Yep.
Great.
I have one question about the umbrella colors. So Pages is proposing these bright green umbrellas. And then Il Pajolo and Sauced are both using red umbrellas. And everyone else, if they have them, are using black?
A lot of black.
Is that correct?
Yep.
And what are the guideline colors?
There's no specific colors in the outdoor dining design standards, but it does prohibit excessively bright neon striped.
You know, like fluorescent orange or something.
No, no logos or lettering.
And also no signage.
It's going to be solid, yeah.
So I guess I'm wondering if having the green and red and black is going to be cohesive enough? You know, recognizing the fact that the green is not anywhere within sight of the red.
Right.
So that's a good thing, I think.
Yeah. And I don't think there are umbrellas at Cafe La Fortuna.
There are, oh, no, I'm sorry, beige.
Blue beige umbrella, are three, it's like a long, long, like a big one. He covers the whole area with one yellow.
Yep.
Oh, right, they have the long, like, free table umbrella.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know, what's the, I mean, as I said, or as Bethany said, we didn't have specific colors, you know, locked into something. Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's something for discussion, although I would imagine a lot of these umbrellas have already been purchased.
Right.
So perhaps as we move on year by year and applications are submitted, when it comes time to have, you know, equipment replaced, that would be maybe a standard that we enforce more at that time than right now at the starting gate, when we're all trying to just get.
But we don't have a color standard now, do we? Other than being too bright.
Discussions were had to just sort of get towards black, so that it was, if I recall, or just.
Well, the black was mentioned, yeah, and it was mentioned to, the, the containers are all painted black. So, and black is kind of a, you know, kind of an accent color throughout the downtown village, too. So I'm told, anyway, I know there's a lot of red brick there, too.
I mean, it is helpful that each restaurant's umbrellas are all the same color, right? So it's not like there's multiple umbrellas of different colors right next to each other.
Right, you mean, restaurant to restaurant, they're all the same color?
Within, within a restaurant's outdoor area.
None of them have stripes, none of them have logos, they're all solid colors.
They don't look like beach umbrellas.
They don't look like.
They're all, and each restaurant only has one color.
Yeah, I mean, it's like.
Correct, they're inconsistent.
You're all, all black restaurants, right? Right, Sam?
So, and I, I agree, if somebody's already bought umbrellas, we don't want to make them go out and buy new umbrellas.
What are yours, sir? Black, okay, yeah, all right, so we have black. Il Pajolo is red. And of course, that's kind of their, their color scheme.
Right.
I should point out, this wasn't in the request here or anything. There is going to be lighting, we're looking at putting lighting in these things, and the lighting is going to be the same, basically, in all the outdoor things. So that'll give a little more uniformity.
Lighting is going to go where?
String lighting.
String lighting, go ahead, or. Okay.
Describe it.
Okay, great.
And what are the two that haven't applied?
Starbucks and Corner Bakery. And we're, we're working with Tony from Washington as well.
Did Starbucks Corner Bakery have something last year?
They did, yep, right at the corners of both of those areas.
Yeah, right across Hinsdale Avenue.
They're across the street.
Okay.
And Jay Dragon and Wild Ginger aren't?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, Laurel just pointed this out to me, and I read through the standards for the umbrellas again. And they're pretty good, I mean, you, Neil and Michelle, you guys have put good pictures in here. You've got, like, checkered umbrellas and, you know, multiple colors, every single one, and we don't permit any of that. So I think it's, even though, in my opinion, the bright green may be considered bright and might, most people, I think our standards are pretty, I don't want to say restrictive, but co-.
Yeah.
Compared to what we want to see in the village. The only thing I, so I'm okay with that. The only thing I would ask is from the restaurant owners, as the years go by on this, don't try to breach the standards, because as soon as one does it, everyone does it, and then it's, it's just a continual fight that we try to do. But I think the standards that we have right now are sufficient, in my opinion.
Right, yeah, and they're, they're all solid. It's not like, they don't say chinsano like my umbrella at home, it doesn't say that.
But that's just one person's opinion.
Yep. Okay, that's all of them.
Okay, that's all. And I think we're pretty much in agreement on the, we've discussed the things that are a slight departure from our standards.
Right.
And I think we're, I think we're ready to go. And if any of those variations prove to be a problem, then we'll have to work our way through that.
Right.
So this is a second reading.
Yep.
And I'm going to make a motion.
Sure.
To approve outdoor dining permits in the Village right-of-way until October 31st, 2022, for Cafe La Fortuna, Altamira Pizza, Il Pajolo Restaurant, Nabuki Fuller House, Vistro Prime, Sauced Pizzeria, and Pages Restaurant, subject to final permit issuance by the Community Development Department, subject to any conditions to be set forth by the Building Commissioner and Fire Department upon final inspection.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Pastuma.
Aye.
Trustee Harlow.
Aye.
Trustee Stifler.
Aye.
Trustee Fisher.
Aye.
Trustee Burns.
Aye.
Trustee Banky.
Aye.
And just one opinion comment on this. So as many of you know, I've spent the past 10 months living outside of Hinsdale and moving back to Hinsdale next week. And I was surprised that, you know, I miss Hinsdale, Hinsdale much more than I expected. And the main reason for it is our downtown, and specifically the restaurants that we have here. I think they're just absolutely outstanding. I compare it to what it was 20 years ago, when we, when we moved here. We had one Mexican restaurant that then went out of business. So, you know, thank you for the time and the investment that you put into our community, it really, really adds to it.
And I'd just like to point out that none of this would have happened without just a tremendous amount of work by the village staff. Police and fire were involved in this. George, George and his folks were involved in looking at the different containers and footings that we're going to have there. A lot of these containers came in, and they didn't come in with the right color, so they've had to paint them, which had been a real pain in the butt, but they took care of that. Rob was very involved with setting up the site plans, and, you know, and the community development is going to be very involved in looking at the final layouts of this thing. And last but, last but not least, Bethany and Trevor have really, really been running, running with the ball, running the ball with it. I'm not getting that right.
Yep.
So, great job, guys.
I have one question. When do you think that these will start? That you will start setting up the planters and everything, the facilities for the outside?
We're shooting for June 1st, but where are we at with that?
Plants are being picked up tomorrow. We'll be getting the plants in the planter boxes, and we'll be starting to lay out the sites as permits are approved. So as Trustee Burns mentioned, these will be subject to final permit issuance by the Community Development Department. So as, as those permits get issued, we'll start to look at how we can deploy our public services to help get the planter boxes to the appropriate sites.
So June, June 1st is the goal?
Yeah, June 1st has been the goal.
Sooner than that, if, if, if permits are, are approved, yeah.
We'll be in contact. We'll let you put.
Okay.
Can Neil B.?
Okay, that takes me to 10B. And this is a, this is a motion to reject all bids for construction of outdoor dining area platforms. As I mentioned, I think, in the last item, we were looking at various platform systems for the restaurants on First Street, well, really for all the restaurants, such that the platform, you'd have the curb, and the platform would match up with that, so there wasn't, you know, a step down or step up or anything like that. We, we found a pretty good system with this one company. They quoted us $148,000, which is, of course, is a little more money than we cared to spend on this. But the other issue with that is between the delivery on this and what, like, the restaurants were going to get going June 1st, and then the, these flooring systems were, were going to come a few weeks after that. Then the restaurant would have to shut down for five to six days in order for us to install that, which I'm sure is not something you guys were real excited, excited in doing. So we decided to go, to go ahead with the, basically, not use flooring in the restaurants on First Street and those along Hinsdale Avenue. As I mentioned, the ones on Washington Street, Vistro and Sauced, we are still working on a suitable arrangement for that, and we're pretty close to getting something that's going to work for that. And so we'll deal with the angle problem.
So we'll have something come back to the board for Sauced and Vistro flooring?
Yes, yeah, so that'll be a separate thing.
Okay.
And so basically, we want.
I'm sorry, we may not be bringing that back, that may be within the village manager's spending.
Yeah, I was thinking that, yeah, so.
But how, what's the timing on that, since these restaurants want to get started?
We're, we're trying to have that aligned with the turnout of the same date.
June, June 1.
Yeah, I thought it was closer to Memorial Day. Memorial Day, yeah.
Okay.
So basically, we want to reject the bids, we're going to see how things work this year. We're going to see how this, for instance, we're going to see how this particular flooring that we're going to put on Washington Street, we're going to see how that works, and then we'll make changes accordingly.
Okay. So we have to make a motion to reject the bids?
Move to, yeah, I'm going to move to reject all bids for the construction of outdoor dining area platforms in the central business district.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Pastuma.
Aye.
Trustee Harlow.
Aye.
Trustee Stifler.
Aye.
Trustee Fisher.
Aye.
Trustee Burns.
Aye.
Trustee Banky.
Aye.
Okay, any tollway update, Brad?
Nothing to report, President Collier.
Anything from the departments, staff? Any citizens want to speak on anything?
I would just thank everyone that this year's help of getting up this really helped customers that, like, when I just started, when I do happy, in our case, I, I need to remodel inside.
Right.
And I need to go and share, so I completely get rid of my inside shitty. So we will help a lot, I really appreciate the help of everyone, and I want to thank you everyone.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And we really appreciate the support, all the restaurants have been very supportive of this, and.
The Village did the last two years, too, it was amazing to be out ahead of any other municipality in the Holland that's happened.
Yeah.
And, you know, on behalf of my staff, everybody's incredibly grateful they were continuing to effort and living.
Yep. We should all, we should all applaud, everybody applaud.
All right, trustee comments? There's no reason for a closed session, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Pastuma.
Aye.
Trustee Harlow.
Aye.
Trustee Stifler.
Aye.
Trustee Fisher.
Aye.
Trustee Burns.
Aye.
Trustee Banky.
Aye.
Thank you.